Welcome, everybody here and on the Zoom meeting. It's October the 30th, seven o'clock, seven oh one to be exact. And we have a public hearing scheduled tonight for Thoreau Residences LLC for a comprehensive permit under MGL Chapter forty B, Paragraphs twenty through twenty-three for two hundred and sixteen unit multifamily development, which is on a thirteen point zero eight acre portion of the real property known and numbered as two seventy-five Forest Ridge Road. And as I said, welcome, everybody. Tonight, we, I think we're going to have an update from the applicant.
Welcome.
We, oh, yeah. We got some revised plans in yesterday, and I think they will be discussing. We will be discussing that tonight. We have three members of the board here. The fourth member is joining us remotely. So let's do a quick roll for the members. Ravi Fayya.
Present.
Elizabeth Dwyer-Lannett.
Present.
Thomas Swaim.
Present.
And Chieta Kinnaman is present as well, if you might have noticed. So, as I said, an update tonight, we started this process on December, sorry, February twenty-ninth of this year with a plan. And we had a site visit on March the nineteenth. We had two working sessions, and then it's been quiet for a bit, and then the applicant had filed for a, has filed for a zoning variance for really the abutting parcel of this proposed development. That zoning variance got approved, got, did not get appealed. And now the applicant has gone ahead and has been revising the plans, and the revising of the plans, I think, for a large part came came through as a result of some comments from the board and somebody abutters. And so tonight, after, sorry, I skipped this, after, after introduction of the board members, we also have President Elizabeth Hughes, the Planning Director of the town planner, and Joe Pizzola as our peer review consultant on the civil site, just general forty B side. So tonight, as I said, update to, from the applicant, after they're, they're done presenting, the board will, will ask some questions and give some feedback, and then we'll open it up to the public for comments and feedback. And at close of hearing tonight, I would like to schedule, obviously, a follow-up meeting, which I think we have a date already pretty much in mind. There's a couple of other things that I would like the board to think about, and also the applicant to think about while we're discussing it. We can revisit this at the end of the hearing as well, is to see whether we wanted to do another sidewalk, because it's been a while, and the plans have changed, so we might, the board might wish to do another sidewalk. Timing with that could be a bit tricky, but we'll make that work. And also, and it's maybe even more for the applicant, whether we will do another working sessions. You know, and the working sessions typically, and this is really common for the public, are being done in this room. They're not open to the public, and they're usually, well, they have been. Usually, it's only Thomas Swaim and myself, Thomas being the, the non-voting member of this board. Have been attending them with our peer review consultants, Elizabeth, and then the applicant's team. One thing that I've, that I've never told the applicant as well, if you're not familiar in this town or with this board, we have, as you know, a four-member board, three members will be voting. There will be Ravi, Elizabeth, myself. So if you are, you know, which sometimes happens, trying to count votes, like, you know, we need, we always vote as a majority or unanimously, and the, the, the non-voting member in, in our, the way we see it, has a strong of a voice in that discussion as well. So we really, although Thomas physically might not vote, you know, he votes for us. So I wanted to make, make sure that the applicant i- is aware of that. That all being said, I think those were sort of the administrative things that I wanted to talk about and mention, looking around. Nope, I haven't forgotten anything, apparently. So applicant, up to you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know where you want to stand, or the camera will pick it up.
Oh, it's an owl. It picks up everything.
Oh, okay.
And everyone. Just keep that in mind.
So Mark Sek on behalf of the applicant, Thoreau Residence LLC. I just want to, you know, start by, you know, Chairman and members of the board, you know, we appreciate, you know, your patience. As, as we were all told, we were waiting on, you know, we were looking at some revisions to the plan. We were waiting on a variance that was directed from public comment, members of the board, to kind of clear some of the congestion around that rubbery roundabout. So a lot of these revisions were, were waiting until that variance was passed, the appeal period had lapsed. So we knew that we can move forward with this plan. But I do thank the board for their patience. We are still waiting to submit the traffic, the updated traffic report, which we did receive today. We will get that in the end of this week. And then the landscape plan. The reason for the delay in the landscape plan is we, we've switched landscape architects to HAWK design, which was the landscape architect, not only on the tourist project that was recently ahead of the board, but they were also the master architect, or landscape architect on Forest Ridge Road for all the condominiums and townhouses. So a lot of familiarity with the board, with the town, and we thought that was appropriate to bring them in. He was away on vacation for a month in, in France, so we're still waiting on that plan. We hope to have that submitted next week. We have seen preliminary plans. So I do apologize and appreciate the board's patience there. So for tonight, we're going to just kind of give a high-level overview of the changes. Some of these you've seen. There's some more that have been refined from an architectural standpoint. Some of the sustainability features we'll go over, so. Yeah, well, I think I've got to share. Libra, you're sharing. My, do I have permission to share?
Yes.
So this is just, you know, in a, and Jay, Jason Mansky from the architecture team, we'll highlight this along the board, but this is kind of a revised elevation as you approach the subject property here, Thoreau Residences. We have increased the unit count, and I think this is known through the last one at the variance, to a two hundred and thirty-seven unit plan. I'm actually going to let Bill Cordero, I'm going to come back in a second. Bill Cordero, who is with Allen and Major, he's the civil engineer on the project, he's going to go over kind of the new site plan and highlight some of the major changes that we think were beneficial to the project.
For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates, I'll approach the television and maybe point out some of the highlights, but as record civil engineer, we've been obviously working with this board, and as a result of the workshop session that Mr. Chair mentioned from a few months ago, we have now been able to incorporate a lot of the feedback and suggestions that we've heard from this board, your consultants, the town residents into this plan that is now a fully formed design. You know, by general intent of a comprehensive permit, there's supposed to be preliminary plans. But these are very advanced in terms of they have full detail with stormwater management, they're a full complement of landscaping, of course, the traffic analysis. So the goal is to give you as much information as necessary to render an opinion on this at the end of the day. So what you'll notice first and foremost is our properties outlined in red, that is the same general area that we discussed with this board at the last couple of hearings. But the use variance that was granted by this board allows us the opportunity to take the driveway that was connected through the, I guess, the finger of the property and shift it onto the Thoreau.
Can you maybe stand on the other side of the, so that might be a bit better for public?
Yes, of course. Thank you. What, what that allows us to do with the use variance is actually move the driveway onto the land of the Thoreau Club. And for the benefit of the public that maybe weren't privy to some of the use variance discussions, there were inherent benefits in that relocation, given the, given the topography challenges that most folks might be familiar with. As you enter into off of the property, there's a very large drainage kettle hole located in this general vicinity that would have been impacted by a driveway coming through there. Manageable, constructable, we would have engineered a way through it. But at the end of the day, the solution to move the driveway onto the adjacent property results in minimization of, of effects to that kettle hole. Additionally, it allows for what would have probably been traffic congestion at the roundabout at the end of Forest Ridge Way. By creating an additional curb cut, we're able to utilize the curb cuts that the Thoreau Club already has. So the ultimate traffic pattern is maintained. It's not going to negatively affect by site distance and can conflict the Black Birch residents adjacent to us. For general, bringing the site in, we have a divided boulevard roadway. This is slightly wider than you had seen on, under previous plans. It's to afford the opportunity to have a median section running down the center portion of the driveway for landscaping, signage, lighting, basically an attractive element. But it also satisfies a very important NFPA code requirement, because this is a single ingress and egress project. Working with the fire department, we want to ensure that, because they only have one point of entry and exit into the site, that should there be problems, and I'll use that term loosely, it could be a fallen tree, it could be a broken down car, it could be any number of different things. The intent is that one lane, if it were to become completely incapacitated and the fire department couldn't travel, that they could use the other lane at their discretion. Also, as they're entering into the site, if residents needed to emergency exit the site, there would be separate lanes to accommodate, accommodate a lot of that possible interaction. Hopefully, that never occurs. But the development of a wide boulevard roadway affords us that opportunity. As, as we navigate into the site, the layout is generally similar. But as Mark referred to, instead of having three residential buildings, we now have two residential buildings with the unit count that he identified.
Yeah.
There you go. Thank you. So you can clearly see the, the old site plan on the left and our new site plan on the right. By reducing to two buildings in footprint, adding a story to the building, we were able to contract a number of the areas on the site. We still have the parking that surrounds the, the buildings. We want it directly available to all of the residences, so it's a campus-style development. But in doing so, we're able to pull the area of disturbance away from the director butters of Black Birch, create separation. That was a concern before, in an interest to save trees along that joint property line and really bring the development as far away as we feasibly can and still make it constructable. So just looking at my notes, we have able, we've been able to increase the distance from our abutters about thirty-two feet on the roadway, an increase of about thirty-two feet, and an increase of about thirty feet to the nearest building point to that property line. So we perceive those to be, to be benefits to the site. Thank you. He's showing all the metrics. Could you go back to the site plan? Yes, that, that's, this is fine. So we've been able to achieve that in the revised site, site layout that provided to the board for review. Continuing on the narrative of the site, again, two buildings, both of them have courtyards. Certainly, we can discuss the courtyards at a future point with amenities, pool area, sitting areas, basically areas for the residents to gather and enjoy the, enjoy the property in total. All surface parking, surface parking that provides a one-point-six ratio, so we're asking for three hundred and ninety-four parking spaces around the site. Some of them will be garaged. We have three detached standalone garage units that will be amenity-based for the residents of the community that will be provided. As we're moving through the site plan, as we get to the rear of the site, in previous applications, we had multiple surface air stormwater basins. So I'm getting a little granular in the infrastructure. We can discuss this more in future meetings and with your peer review consultant. But we had multiple surface basins on site. We have primarily moved our stormwater to a subsurface drainage system located underneath the parking lot. We'll have one open air basis at the, the rear of the site. Both of those systems will meet all of the stormwater management standards, all of the town of Concord standards and bylaws. So we'll ask your peer reviewer to, to fact-check us on that, and we'll go through that. But by moving the basins, the surface area basins into subsurface infiltration underneath the parking lot, we have further been able to reduce the amount of impervious area, the amount of disturbed area on site. And again, under the guise of saving trees, pulling the, pulling the development, pulling the clearing, pulling all of the tree removal away from our abutters and really condense that project as much as possible in the interest of environmental savings. Some of the general metrics we have, if you wanted to jump to the upside, where they're printed for the team and the public. From the prior plan, we did reduce the lot coverage from seventy-two percent down to forty-one percent. Admittedly, some of that is because we, we moved the roadway onto the other property. But in doing that, it allows us to increase our undisturbed area, our net savings of trees and native vegetation by one-point-six acres, which we think is a tremendous benefit to the revised plan. We also reduced our building coverage from approximately fourteen-point-four percent down to thirteen-point-four percent. So one percent reduction in the amount of impervious building cover on the site. And that number is reflective of not only the two residential buildings, but also a potential wastewater treatment plant building and our detached garages, which are in addition to the plan. So a one percent reduction, even with the addition of some additional small, small structures on site. We talked about the separation to the abutters, but also on the revised plan, we did eliminate a number of retaining walls that were supporting the site. First and foremost, on the main site driveway coming in, adjacent to the kettle hole, those by and large have been removed. And as we were coming into the property, we also had a proposed retaining wall adjacent to the slopes that would be adjacent to Black Birch, that has been eliminated in favor of natural vegetated slopes that will be allowed to grow and reform native vegetation as part of the tree line that's out there. We've also adjusted our position of our wastewater treatment plant. As a reminder to this board, this is a permit that we will be seeking through Mass DEP under the Groundwater Discharge Permit Program. So to the extent the board wants to discuss it, we of course can, but we will defer most of the, the design and purview to Mass DEP for that at the end of the day. But we did relocate, would you mind going back to the site plan? We did relocate our septic fields and treatment tanks to the northern corner of the site. Again, it'll read as green space. All of these elements will be below grade, but it'll just read as general open space to the site. It'll read as a, a field, for lack of a better term, for the residents. And on top of that field, we can introduce additional elements like a dog park. One of the most requested features for a lot of the multifamily that we do is, is have the dog park there. And then we'll take some of our other infrastructure-based needs, and again, we'll move those as far away as feasible to the site, to the norway portion of the site. However, it will still maintain connectivity to the adjacent grounds, that any walking trails that exist, we will, we will abut them, and the residents here can continue to utilize them, even though we're creating some necessary infrastructure on that northeastern portion of the site, through the saved tree line, they will still have access to those trails, which we believe is a very important sort of passive amenity where we can suggest to the residents, if they wanted to go for a walk in the wood line, they, they certainly could. So the site plan continues to favor those elements. And then I guess, as a, as a last wrap-up to the site plan, you know, we also want to ensure that because we're creating a division of the property, that the Thoreau Club will remain compliant with zoning, compliant with necessary parking, compliant with lot coverages and so forth. So the division of the land to create this project doesn't adversely degrade the, the Thoreau Club for maintaining its zoning compliance with the town. For the, for the development, we will have a series of waivers, primarily for, for the use. Those will be provided, and we can certainly discuss those with the board, obviously, as the hearings commence. I'm happy to field questions now, as I'm here. We can continue and talk through architecture. And then I can come up if the board has any questions or respond to any public questions, if you'd like.
No, I think, I think.
I just asked one on this, what it means.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Just, it says increased balconies for tenant space from eleven percent to seventy-five percent. I'm just, but just tell me what you're talking about.
Yeah, we could probably, some color on that. So the prior plan, you didn't have many balconies for residents who kind of wanted some outdoor space. We thought that was an important feature to add. To the units.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. You mentioned a dog park. Is there also a play area for children there?
So we, we don't have, we don't have a playground on the plans, but we do have, we do have the open fields that I'm referring to. So those, those wastewater fields will, will read as flat fields, that there would be open space available.
Would there be, I'm just looking, that then it would go straight up to the parking lot? So for containing area for dogs, would it be similarly easy to have a contained area for children?
Well, I mean, certainly something we could talk about, Mark, if you would like to talk about, containments for dogs is certainly necessary. For a lot of purposes, we can't have them roaming free.
Sure. Small children, similar problem.
Well, that's true. Not, some kids may not bite, but the dogs might.
It's not the biting, it's the running into traffic.
Yes.
It's really not recommended.
Understood.
Yeah, I think that'd be something good to look into.
Great.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And we definitely have room back there to accommodate, you know, a lot, lot of play area.
Yeah, just something so balls aren't rolling into the parking lot, children aren't rolling into the parking lot.
Yeah, sure, sure. Yeah, sa- safety is very important to us, so we can definitely look into it. I, I guess I failed to mention on our site driveway coming in, you know, we've also introduced speed tables along the length of that roadway as part of our traffic calming measure, because we want the, the residents here, this to be a very low-speed entry into the site as part of that safety that you're raising.
Different, also.
Well, it, it's a very long roadway, so when you have a, when you have a long roadway, people tend to accelerate because they can see the stretch of roadway. So we've introduced that traffic calming speed table to prevent that. With one generally at the midpoint, and then one right before you enter into our campus. So that way, those speeds are as, as reduced as they can be.
Cool. Thank you, thank you. And just for, for the public, general public here, and and public on Zoom, I would assume we, we will be getting a copy of this follow point, right, so that we can put it online, right? So that everybody will have the opportunity to, to review this. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm here for further questions. So I'm going to just highlight some of the sustainability features, and that's an important topic, and then we'll, we'll talk about the architecture in a second. You know, so we, we will be hiring, we have hired an energy modeling and sustainability consultant that will be going through, through the documents, right, as there is a, a pretty stringent, you know, energy code. I kind of want to just touch upon, you know, some of the, the aspects that will be providing to this project. You know, I think we all know it's going to be an all-electric project. You know, we'll have an environmentally friendly design, and we have reduced the building footprints. A lot of effort and inspirations made to increase kind of the islands and, and really just the, the experience for the residents in.
Did you speak up? Yeah, I think, I think you want, you want to speak up a little bit, people know.
No, well, I can, I can just talk louder.
Good.
Is it better?
Yeah.
Appreciate it. So we, we will have twenty percent of the spaces be for EV parking. We, we get a lot of EV parking in a lot of our communities. We know how important that is. We will utilize kind of these water sense low-flow faucets. We'll have fresh air and bathroom exhaust through the energy recovery ventilators, ERF, at all residential units. We'll have smart thermostats in all the residential units. We are planning for rooftop solar on the buildings here. You know, some of the other kind of energy.
Sorry, you are planning for it, doesn't mean that it's in these plans or that it might be planned.
It'll be planned, yes. So we'll have to, a factor for that in the roof design structure, right, to accommodate the, the uplift and the loads. But we are planning on having solar here at this property.
At day one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Continuous roof insulation, R forty-five, which the standard, I believe, is R, R thirty, so going a little bit higher there. All our windows will have a U value of at least point one seven. These numbers may not mean anything, but I have put in what the standard window is. It's a point three. R value, want a higher value. U value, want a lower value. Louder. You know, we'll have heat pumps in all residential units, heat pump hot water heaters, Energy Star appliances, LED fixtures, and we have significantly decreased our surface drainage to a lot more tree retention. So just some of those, and we can discuss this one, but I'm going to let Jay from the architectural team come on and kind of talk about, you know, the changes that we've made based off comments for a more modern look. As you'll, you'll see, this building is significantly different than what was submitted last time around.
Yeah, doesn't look like the colonial in anymore.
Thanks, Mark. So my name is Jason Mansky. I'm an architect with the architectural teams. We're the architects for the project. In addition to all the, the site plan revisions that we've talked about, we did get comments in the working sessions about the, the aesthetic and the architecture. We heard those, so we went back and took another pass at it. We went away from the traditional look to something more modern, more contemporary. Couple of ways we did that. The, the biggest one, most significant, I think, is to reduce, eliminate the slope roofs. So we have flat roofs here, and even though we added height to the buildings, when you look at the height with the flat roof versus the height with the previous design and the slope group, we're pretty close to the same height that we were before. In addition to that, smaller things like changing the window design, before we had double horn windows, we've now moved to a more of a casement awning style window, much more contemporary, more modern look. We mentioned the balconies, and we've added balconies through a lot of the units. That provides, of course, the residents, you know, the ability to enjoy the, the outdoors surrounding them, but it also adds a visual interest to the exterior design. So we placed balconies at strategic points in the building to accentuate those sort of high points. So this view coming in the main drive, let's see, there's a row of balconies right on that corner. There's also balconies at the back corner. So again, create focal points, create points of interest in the building. We coupled those balconies on corners with that sort of framed element, again, to create visual points of interest along the, along the main drive, and also sort of very strategic points around the buildings. Go on, next slide. So this is an overview, looking sort of at the, the main amenity courtyard and the foreground. You can see the amenity building. This was really meant to be the, the center point of the focus point of the entire site plan. So it's a one-story building, and it's really meant to stand on its own, but it is attached to the building, so residents have access to it without going outside. The other benefit of this one-story piece is that it gets the mass of the buildings away from the, the closest abutters. So the, the five-story mass mass is pushed as far back as we can get, keeping that lower one-story mass closer to the others. Materials are pretty traditional residential materials, so we have lap siding. But we also have some fiber cement panel to, again, bring in that more contemporary feel. We also had some fiber cement trim added, mostly in banding at, you know, specific points in the corners that go along with that framed element. So again, it's a, it's a much more, we think, modern and contemporary look than the previous design. And much more keeping, I think, with the common seven-year seat. Next one.
I mean, we shared the elevations, but, you know. I think you've kind of spoken to them, but.
Yeah, so again, the top one is the main view, the, as soon as you enter into the site from the main drive, the dead amenity building, lower front and center. And then the lower view is sort of around the corner, but again, it shows the, the repeated balcony elements, the balcony sort of frame elements. And some of that banding. So have any questions or comments?
Could you say more about the amenity building?
Sure. That program hasn't been finalized yet, but typically.
No problem.
We can speak to that. I mean, so we have about. Give her.
Louder.
Here you go. We have give or take about, uh, eleven thousand square feet of amenities. So we will have, you know, we'll have onsite, uh, management, uh, leasing property management onsite, right? So they will be housed there. We'll have a gym, work from home space. We'll have a bike room, um, to promote, um, kind of sustainability and bike riding there. Locked, uh, bike room, mail and package room, of course, um, kind of game room, but. And, and we'll introduce elements that kind of, um, our plan's kind of headed that it opens up and works with the large courtyard there, but.
Great.
Be a full, full suite of amenities, um, for the residents.
Great.
Cool. So this is the end, the extent of your presentation, right?
Yeah. So, you know, we, we do know we're, we're behind on a few items. Um, you know, we're hoping to get, you know, we wanted to get the civil and the architecture and to get the peer reviewers get going to start getting some more meaningful dialogue and incorporate some of their comments and as well as, as the public. So we wanted to keep this high level, you know, get a chance to get the peer reviewers going. Um, and continue to work with both the board, the public and, and the third party peer reviews as we, and we look to refine these to a project that, that works for all parties.
Hmm, good, good.
We want to want to do a public part here.
Yeah, okay. So tha- uh, thank you. So yeah, peer reviewer, so the, so for people that don't know this, peer reviewer are, uh, consultants that, uh, this board hired, um, being paid for by the applicant. And we have peer reviewers for architecture and civil engineering, I think.
For traffic.
And traffic, traffic. Yeah, forgot. That's because it wasn't, wasn't discussed tonight. And that was, that was, I mean, I'm sure a lot of people were, were, uh, interested in hearing traffic tonight. Um, but we'll just save that for the fifth. Um, we, um, we, we just, the board or the applicant, uh, submitted revised plans, the architectural, civil engineering, uh, just yesterday. So, uh, the board hasn't seen them yet while I, I'll, I scanned them briefly this morning on, um, and I now have a full set as well. Um, so this is, I, I kind of appreciate this because this, this, this presentation tonight, at least for me, gives me, uh, sort of a direction of where to look, uh, where do we go from here? And, uh, so we now also can, can give these plans to our peer reviewer. Um, but on the, the fifth, just to, to, we need to have a very, uh, robust traffic presentation. Um, I think that's, that's what the, uh, the about us, uh, really, uh, are looking for. And it, it, it will be important to know, you know, since you increased, uh, the size of the building, what obviously, what, what is the delta? How much more traffic? You know, how many vehicles per hour additional? You know, what, what is this? How, how would the about us notice this? So I think, I think that's, uh, and that's very important, uh, to have done. And then also obviously the planting plan. Um, although that's, that's, I think, is a little bit less of, uh, yeah, in the bullseye. Um, so that's, that's there. Um, I'm looking at Elizabeth and Tom. Do you have any additional questions here? Ravi, uh, Ravi, you still there, right?
I am here, yes.
Now, do you, do you have any, any?
I just had him stop sharing.
Okay, yeah. Uh, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, I, I, I think there was one point where the gentleman mentioned a reduction in impervious, but then maybe corrected himself. So can you clarify between the old plan and new plan? Is there a reduction in impervious area? Do we know that?
Uh, there, there is a, there is a reduction in impervious area between the old iteration of the plan and the current one. And what my correction was is part of the, the reduction is a shift from impervious that was on the, the land to be occupied by the apartments to the driveway that is now on the, the road club property. So there's a little bit of trade there, but ultimately it isn't, it is a net reduction overall, uh, for the development by, by the collapsing of the footprint of the buildings and then shrink wrapping the parking to those buildings.
Yeah, thank you. That's helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I think it might be helpful for us for the next meeting to have an overlay of the, the old and the new. Sure. Just very simple line, colored lines overlay so that it can, and that might be a good visual also. Because you, you mentioned that, you know, you moved the buildings away from the butters. Um, but having an overlay really, I think, would bring that to the fore. And, and I've mentioned before in several other meetings, I'd love to see a few sections drawn. Um, you know, I think that that's going to be very, very helpful for us and for the about us.
Nope.
Um, what's the, what's the mix of, uh, one, two and three bedroom units?
You know, we, yeah, we have ten percent three bedrooms that are required under the, the forty B program. Um, we have fifty percent, uh, two bedrooms and about forty percent, give or take, uh, one bed.
And ha- have you ever thought about any four bedroom?
Yeah, Chair, I, I know you brought that up last time. That would be something that the town, our understanding, would have to support and, and waive that requirement to do four bedroom units. Um, so it is something we can look at if, if, if the board and the town, um, would like that. We have not historically built four bedroom units, but I mean, we, we understand that the housing needs have conquered. Um, the housing needs have conquered and think that four bedroom units would, would be, uh, would be good here.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think we could, uh, we could, um, ask Liz Russ about that. Uh, how, how that, how that is. And, and obviously, I mean, you need to rent them, you need to market them, right? So I, I, I hate for four bedroom units to be empty. So if you can fill them, then, and Liz Russ said that's, that's a good, good idea. Then, then we should, you know, I think we should suggest that.
That's a good idea. Would the four bedrooms then theoretically at least be included in affordable?
Twenty-five percent of it would be.
So however many there were. Okay. And so on the others, it's just twenty-five percent of the total.
Yeah, and they'll have to be even, you know, when we do our regulatory agreement with, which down, we got a chance to review with the state, right? We'll go and pick the units and they have to approve the units, right? So they have to be evenly dispersed by unit count, uh, or by unit type and by floor, as you can't bunch them all in one area. They have to be evenly distributed. Yes, yeah. Yeah, all the, yes, yeah, yeah.
I should know this or remember, there's no age restriction on who can correct, use the facility.
So I've got a, a few more, uh, comments. And, you know, as I just said, you know, I'll, we just got the plans in yesterday. I've, I've briefly skimmed them. So, you know, I'll be, uh, all shooting from the hip here a little bit. Um, so, um, is there one thing, and I, I'm sure that's not done yet, but the cotton filler, uh, calc, whether that's, whether that's been done or whether you have anything?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I don't have it for tonight, but I will make sure I have it for our discussion.
Yeah, yeah. And this is, this is, uh, just for, for, I, I'd like to see, you know, how many, how much material is going to be imported uh, versus exported. You know, typically there is always material going offsite and material coming inside because if that never matches up what you need and what you have, but just how is that balance? And, and what's taking off? And that's, that's what I'm, I'm asking for. And I'm, I'm sure the neighbors and, you know, in town have had a, a question or two about, you know, what's, you know, how much is, how many trucks are we going to see and all, but, um, so that's.
I, I, I will definitely advance it, but I'll put this philosophy out there. So as I mentioned during the presentation, we went to more subsurface drainage. And part of the decision to do that is because the site is considered a fill, meaning we would need to bring in material to create the pad sites and the parking, we're using some of that area that would otherwise be earth that has to come in on the back of a truck as part of our drainage. Um, so that was a decision point that was made to, to lessen the amount of earthwork necessary.
Uh, you, you, you teed this up for me very nicely. Okay. Because, because, you know, below the building is also a lot of fill, right? So that could potentially be used for, for parking, right? So, um, that's still some, that's something that, you know, I know we've heard for, we've heard from the, the public. And, you know, we, we'd like, I mean, I, I still, I mean, the plan is an improvement. So thank, at least in my mind. So thank you, thank you for that. Uh, but I still think there's a lot of pavement. Um, so I'd love to find ways to reduce the, reduce the pavement, um, obviously. And you've heard us say that before, not just me, but also the public, uh, that parking below ground would, uh, could be useful, uh, to reduce, in reducing the pavement. Um, and also any other, there, there are some opportunities here to do some pervious pavement. Um, and, and, you know, that, that would be, that would be, uh, an improvement to the plan as well. And I, I'm sorry, forgot your name, the civil engineer. Um, you mentioned that, that, uh, this plan, the LA coming in meets a requirement of the fire code. I would like some way a memo or a signature on a plan from the fire department telling us, we're good with it. Um, and that's just, you know, really for our files that we have the plan, the, the fire department saying, great, we're good.
Um, so all of these, um, plans, um, will be, uh, recirculated to town staff as well as the peer review consultants for their review and comment. Um, likely, um, between now and the continued public hearing. Um, we will try and hold a, um, town staff review meeting with the applicant. Um, so that, uh, so town staff will eventually be providing written comments to the board on the project.
Okay.
She just teed it up for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's my job.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And fire department is in the, on the top of my list. So on that one. Um, two other questions on the, the garages. The, that's a, an additional expense, right? For anybody who wants a garage, needs to sign up and then pay for it, right?
We typically have those as, as ancillary, yes. For those that would like to have, have the private parking.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm just wondering how that would work with a, uh, with affordable units, but then they would just.
Yeah, the affordable units cannot, cannot pay for them. They can't get them.
They can't get them.
So if the board feels that if that's a, an issue, then they would have to make an arrangement to get them for free. Um, and I can check into exactly how that might work, but it's similar to in a, in a condominium project. If there are material upgrades on the inside of the unit, the affordables, if they are extras, the affordable unit owners are not entitled to, to do that because the whole premise is that they're paying thirty percent of their income. And, and the pricing on the, on the, the rent is all geared towards that thirty percent. So if they start paying for extras, they're paying more than thirty percent of their income, which, which is not the goal. The goal is to keep them to that thirty percent.
Okay, cool. That's, that's clear. Um, and, and also was mentioned trails, trails for the residents and access trails. There is, um, there is a trail, I think, that that go cuts through the property. And I'd love it if you guys could find, because the way I think your, your wastewater, uh, your leaching field cuts, cuts off that trail. I'd love it if we could find a way to have that trail continue either around it or, or in, in one way or the other, because I think, I think it's, it's, you know, just a continuation of a trail. So I think that's some black birch and then so that they have access to those trails.
Yeah, I may, I, Ms. Chair, I may have, may have asked this during the workshop. I'm not sure. Does the town have a trails committee that would have the trail network and we could talk to them?
Um, so the trail network is available on the town's GIS.
Okay.
Um, system.
Okay.
And, um, as part of the town staff review meeting, you can speak to the natural resources director, Delia K. About that.
Thank you. Yeah, which, which reminds me, you guys don't need, uh, file an notice of intent of any of that, right?
No.
Okay, good. Um, I think, yeah, yeah.
It's just a brainstorm as we are talking about this, um, underground parking brainstorm that I can't help but wonder if the parking that is, um, right, sort of where the pool building extends, there's parking right there. So if that parking were underground and then that became sort of continuous.
You, you, you'd want to, I think, I think for everybody, really kind of pull up a plan on that.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, yep, yep. So for here, or actually the bigger picture was what gave me that, this idea. So that, um, if you are considering changing some parking to underground and then this near the pool became like continuous field. And I don't know if the trail comes this way, but maybe it does around. That would be some really substantial, wonderful community area and play area. So it's just something to consider if you, I don't know, um, in terms of the traffic pattern.
This area, the republic.
No, I'm referring to on the other side. So if the pool's right here.
Yeah.
Then there's, um, parking spaces kind of right in front of the pool.
It's right here.
Yep. And so if that became underground parking, then you would go straight from that community area into a field, a play space, something like that.
Big activity here to here.
Yeah, that's what I mean. And I, I think there may be a trail that comes along that way. Now, I don't know if it's practical because you'd lose part of the traffic.
From the particular access, that's something we'd want to run by the fire department.
Yeah.
Or you'd have to go down pretty deep to accommodate a fire truck.
Is this something to consider though? Because the parking surrounds the whole area as I'm thinking about families with children living there that if there's some way to get to a bigger space to run around where you don't cross an area where there are cars.
Yeah.
That has a ton of value. Um, and because, you know, you're, you're in such a beautiful natural setting. It is, I think, as of this moment, still set up like a, like a summer camp, you know, someplace where you've got that open area that's not primarily about car access, I think, would add quite a lot of value.
Okay.
That's a good one. That's an interesting one. So, um, I think for now, the members of the board, um, have asked the questions, have made their comments. So let's open it up, uh, to the public. And, um, I see one raised hand, Mr. Bergman.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman Keith Bergman, uh, Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Um, a question for the applicant. One of the issues that's a concern to the trust is that our, uh, forty Bs, uh, in, in Concord be, uh, uh, compliant or, or be voluntarily compliant with the town's fossil fuel free bylaw. Uh, the other forty B that, uh, had filed its application several months, uh, before, uh, this one uh, did volunteer, the Novo Riverside Commons did, uh, in its decision, uh, with the ZBA agree to voluntarily comply with the fossil fuel free bylaw, uh, which applies to all new construction uh, in Concord. Uh, and so, um, uh, we, we recognize that, uh, the, this app, both applications were filed before the fossil fuel free bylaw became effective. Nevertheless, the other forty B voluntarily complied. And it's the trust's hope that, uh, this applicant would agree to do likewise. Thanks.
I'm not familiar with that bylaw off the top of my head. Um, so I'd have to, to take a look at it with, uh, the, the design team to see what, what that entails.
And, and you hired a consultant, right?
At the next meeting. I'm sorry, Chair.
And you, you hired a, hired a consultant, uh.
Yes, we do.
Uh, yeah. So, yeah, that, that would be.
Something that I want him to look at with the entire design.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll be prepared to talk about that at the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's, that's also always been a very important point, uh, for us. So that's something that, that we will push your heart on. Um, so, um, so that's, that the need is on a, next to traffic, that's on the top of the list, uh. Um, next on the list, um, well, uh, Stephen Carr, you, uh, you have your hand up the old fashioned way. So let's, let's go with you.
Um, yeah, this is right. Keith asked the very same question that I was going to ask. I happen to be a member of the Concord Housing Foundation and the Concord Housing Foundation is interested in that very same issue.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Mary Hartman. Thank you, thank you. Um, Mary Hartman.
Thank you, Tayo. Um, hi, this is Mary Hartman. I'm the Chair of the Select Board, but I'm speaking in my own behalf. I just wanted to address the amount of impervious surface and uh let people know that the town of Concord is moving to a stormwater management fund which takes the cost of stormwater management out of property tax and makes it a fee based on impervious surface. So when the developer is thinking of, and we're thinking of impervious surface, there is money to be saved by um underground parking or reducing parking in general. I just wanted to point that out and and we're right now, we're looking at the fee structure, but large parking lots are are going to be um gonna have a heavy burden. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, Mr. Clayton.
Um, thank you. Gary Clayton, thirty-one Black Birch Lane. Um, I am a director butter of the site in question. I also serve as trustee of the Black Birch Association um on the minimum association, but I'm sitting speaking uh on my own behalf. Um, a couple of things. One, um we need to see the real line driveway because I do think it has uh helped improve a number of the serious flaws with the original plan. What would be helpful for me as a butter is to have some sense of the just the depiction of the new built proposed buildings um by way of their top elevation and how that relates to the elevation of the surrounding homes, particularly in this case Black Birch uh um Association. There's, as you pointed out, a number of butters, myself included. And the question is, uh, from my perspective, important just to get a sense of what the overall mass of the proposed building is going to look like from where we are situated. You know, the effect of exterior lighting originating from those buildings, et cetera. So that idea of the top elevation of the proposed structures as relates to the existing elevation of the homes that are situated on Black Birch that abut this particular parcel. The other thing I'd mention, I know we're not going to get into the transportation planning tonight, but uh we had flagged that the earlier transportation study was seriously flawed because it simply missed, ignored uh a forty B project that it's under construction now in Acton along Route sixty-two, which is less than a mile from the entrance of Forest Ridge Road. So I'm hoping the revised traffic plan not only accounts for proposed increase of vehicles originating from this project site, but the significant increase of additional traffic on Main Street because of this forty B project, which, as I say, was completely missed in the earlier traffic study, which I thought was a very serious flaw. Um, into the um question about the connection with open trails, um I sort of like the idea. There is a public walking trail uh near the Black Birch Association properties that circles around the site and at least on paper, could conceivably tie into uh uh and provide access to the residents of this new property, but it's going to require um some careful thinking and planning in terms of how that will be managed. I like the idea of putting some of the part, more of the parking, more of the paved surface underground. Um, it would be one way to achieve that goal. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, I think um and I point to the access sections and I think uh gentleman here um uh is alluding to that as well. I think you some strong graphics on to show us and the public why this plan is better for the neighbors. Yeah, I think I think I think it's, I think it's there. I think, you know, with what you did, but I think you need, you need to convince, I think, neighbors why, uh, you know, why this is better, even though it's bigger, it's still better. And I think that that you need some some good graphics for that. So. Um, Ms. Kenna.
Uh, hi, I I actually share a duplex with Gary. And along with the elevations, I think it would be a good to also know what the the woods barrier would be and how the development of the site would thin out the wood covering.
Yeah, yeah, I I think they there is, there is some, you know, there's a sales pitch to be done here by the applicant, why this is, why this is better. Uh, and there is, there is just, just, just a few visuals that uh that are needed, but I think, I think that's could be done.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, just, just as a side note, with the with the super fund fund site, uh, there was a lot of thinning of the woods that I believe significantly hurt the ability of residents over on that side to sell their properties um because of the visual impact, um along with the noise and the lack of trees to to help mask it.
Okay, thank, uh, thank you. Um, uh, not seeing any hands at the moment on my screen. So are there any questions from the public that's here, the public that's has joined us here? You know, you all, yeah, thank, yeah, you all took the effort to get here, so you might as well ask some questions.
Um, just a comment of Mike Berry, um eighteen Sweet Birch. I noticed on the north side, you have a uh lawn area that is for wastewater treatment. And then we talked about a dog park and maybe a children's play area. But and I live on that same situation and they pump regularly and they check.
Um.
Oh.
Filters regularly. So having structures on that area may be a conflict and maybe it's premature and you haven't developed the wastewater treatment plan yet. But keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Um, and then last time we were talking about a um a variance and we had certain requests brought in mainly um screening along uh so that Sweet Birch doesn't get all the headlights coming out of the driveway and um and then with respect to traffic, um some of the concerns regarding the rotary trap, and I know it's part of the traffic study, but we didn't see in the last study any discussion about what the capacity of the existing rotary is combined with the additional load of additional vehicles. And it would be interesting to see that. And I know earlier discussions, once again, regarding traffic, um discussed the that it was very minimal impact on Route sixty-two and that it was um not a problem, but uh are there requirements for a uh light at sixty-two as a result of this additional traffic? And then if I can speak as um one of the Forest Ridge Road Directors, um we've met with the applicant and expressed our concerns regarding uh construction damage and also additional vehicle load on the pavement that's thirty years old. We are already experiencing repairs and upgrades um even this past year uh as a result of existing traffic. So uh please uh continue the discussions and awareness that you're using a private road for this new development and we need to have the concerns regarding any damages caused by construction and or adverse loading from additional cars.
Okay, thank, yeah, thank you. Yeah, um, any plan to plan for the screening, uh, traffic, you you heard, I mean, I'm sure that that uh your traffic consultant uh um has heard those comments uh that were made very early on in the year and that that he's gonna be incorporating uh those comments. So we're, as we said, looking forward to uh Mr. Mr. Nisho's presentation next time. Um, I have a hand up. Uh, Mr. English.
Hi, I'm Andrew English. I'm three Black Birch Lane. And I have a a a number of concerns. First of all, I I I guess I don't understand the process that well, and maybe this is the American way. But why were we presented with those original plans months ago when they were so outlandish and far-fetched and perhaps even insulting to those of us who care about things like that? Is that the way that works? And now they make these changes and we are expected, I hope and hoped and to be impressed by their changes that they've made, even though the changes leave some uh uh things in question. Is that the way these things work? That's a rhetorical question. The next question is, the next thing I have to say is the plans were presented to you yesterday for a meeting today. That that meeting had already been postponed from a previous time. Now, I know that these gentlemen are very busy and have very busy, important lives, but isn't it interesting that the plans were presented to you just yesterday for you to process and deal with in this meeting? In addition, the traffic update, why was it a a a traffic update even necessary? A a new traffic update even necessary? Could it be because the original one from the gentleman was for marble was so outlandish and and disguised so many things that we have to be concerned about in this? If the developers really cared about the butters whom they mentioned several times in this uh in their talk, they wouldn't have come up with this development in the first place because it cannot help but affect the lives of three condo condominium associations, uh probably adversely, no matter what they do. So, you know, I I'm just concerned about this and I just want you all to know my feeling and I'm sure my, I'm not the only one who feels this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so the plans were submitted uh yesterday. They were presented today, um as I said earlier, um we haven't had much time to study them. We're shooting from the hip a little bit, but uh we're giving the applicant some good feedback here, I think. Um, that can be addressed and the plans now will be submitted to a peer review consultant who consultants who will have uh over a month to uh to do their review and come back with a uh robust review, I would expect. Um, and then we'll we'll continue the discussion. And, you know, as we go along, I think we hope, our our hope is to come out of this uh whole process with the best possible plan for uh the town. Um, and, you know, hopefully that the the uh the applicant will think uh that same thought as well. I think we have shown, this or this board has shown that in the Novo process, we we came to a pretty uh pretty decent plan in the end. And I think the uh applicant was happy with the plan as well. And that's moving forward. So um I have uh some confidence that that in the end of this uh this road um there's gonna be a good plan for everybody. And, you know, this is taking taking a while, but, you know, I I don't mind that this this process so far has been taking a while because as long as planned plans are improving as we move along, I think then, you know, we can take all the time we need to to get to a good result. So uh that's kind of how the process works. So. And um and there is somebody else with a hand up, Deb W. Deb, Deborah, are you here? Oh, actually. Deb? Hello, you're you're unmuted, so.
Okay.
Deb? Maybe we'll try it uh again in a little later. Any any more questions from the public here? None. Uh, seeing no additional hands raised. Um, so let's talk about where we go from here. As we said, I think we have a meeting scheduled that works for everybody on December the fifth.
Fifth, mm hmm. Um, so, um, meeting space in the town of Concord is highly coveted. Um, so the only meeting space that was available is the meeting room at the Light Plant off of Elm Street. That's where you'll be meeting.
Okay.
I mean, we'll have an owl and all that stuff.
I I if not, um, this owl and that screen will be going to the Light Plant. So, but yes.
Thank you so much for organizing that space. I know it was, it was difficult and it
It was.
As I said, I feared that I had to give up my birthday dinner, but
So just for, yeah.
No, no, she she was moving it, I'm sorry.
So just for everybody's information, as you um come into the Light Plant off Elm Street, um you proceed straight and the meeting room entrance is um is on the backside of the building.
What's the uh the address? Never mind.
Elm Street.
You start out with the.
Yeah.
I'll tell you in a sec.
Yeah, right.
Oh.
Steps on the left.
I see, I know. Yeah, okay. It, I'll, I'm good.
Um, then do we want to do another sidewalk?
Yes, eleven seventy-five Elm Street. Thank you, ma'am. You're welcome.
So we we do want to do another sidewalk. Okay, how about um Tuesday, the third of December? I I know Tuesday for uh for some other sidewalks, Tuesdays were a good, a good day, right? Robbie, could you, could you do that, the sidewalk, or?
Uh, the third? I should be able to.
Third of December, it's a little bit late, but I mean, to a little bit close to the to the hearing, but since this is an ongoing process anyways, um.
So what time? Uh, eight thirty AM is the earliest I could do and I'm happy to go later.
Uh, no, I I think for people that are still working like Robbie, uh eight thirty is uh
Yeah, I'm I'm I have getting kids to school.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So eight thirty, that would be great. So, um and then do we feel like we need another working session? Are you, you?
I'd be happy to.
Yeah, but you wouldn't be on, it would be time, I said.
Until I see the traffic report.
So you wanna, and that and that would work from a scheduling point of view.
Well, then all it would come the better for me, but I'm.
And then so so this will be after December fifth.
Yes.
Uh, we'll we'll do something if we need to, I think. Good. Um, we have, is Deb back yet? I'm not Deb, you're back. I see you on the screen, but um did you want to say something? You're, you are unmuted, but we're not hearing you.
Um, so, um, she can submit comments by email?
She can, yeah, yeah. I need to, Deb, if you have a comment, you can submit that via email to uh to the town planner. Um, is that it? Like, looking at the my board members, Joel, Elizabeth.
Everything is in order with the fifty-three G and the peer review consultants.
Very solid. We have a, I need, we have uh an extension until the end of the year, right?
Yes.
Do we, uh, do we need to vote on that or we voted?
You already voted. So I just need a a motion, can continue the public hearing to December fifth at seven PM. I move to continue the public hearing to December fifth at seven PM.
All right, second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
You know, need to do, or Elizabeth, Elizabeth Dwyer-Lanin.
Aye.
Ms. Freya.
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you all so much.